Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of June 12, 2012. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Cannibera is excused with notice. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the arrangement they always provide for us. And I would like to ask, let me see, Greg, our city attorney tonight, would you please lead us in the pledge?
[inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, we did. It's over there. You can hear it in the corner. I didn't see it. I thought it was behind that. Okay. We do have two announcements. The first announcement is regarding our reconstruction of the Crestmore neighborhood. Phase two utility replacement project. Phase two of the utility replacement project within the Crestmore neighborhood will be starting next week. This project will replace water lines, sewer lines, and storm drains in the fire damaged portion of the neighborhood. And while this is exciting news, there will be some inconvenience to the neighborhood. The construction will require periodic road closures during the daytime working hours and some traffic detours throughout the neighborhood. The first such road closure will begin on June the 25th. Glenview Drive between San Bruno Avenue and Claremont Drive will be closed to through traffic from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the entire week of June 25th. A notice will be sent to the neighborhood in the next several days detailing this closure. The phase two project is expected to last from next week through the end of September. The next phase of work, phase three, affecting the remainder of the neighborhood, will start shortly thereafter in the fall. The city will try to minimize the inconvenience to residents as much as possible. Construction updates are posted on the project website, www.rebuildcrestmore.org, and the city will continue to send out periodic construction newsletter updates and hold open house meetings. We appreciate everyone's patience as we rebuild the neighborhood. I have one other very short announcement. It turns out that a gentleman named James Hahn of San Bruno is actually competing in the United States Open at the Olympic Club. And he's a resident and he plays from the Lake Merced Golf Club. So, good luck to James. Presentations? We don't have any presentations this evening. Review of the agenda. Anything on the agenda? Like to change, move? Okay. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 22, 2012, and the city council study session of June 6, 2012. Errors, corrections, omissions? Seeing none, they will be approved as submitted. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Questions or action on the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent calendar?
Oh, the chair, actually, I want to pull one item from the consent calendar.
All right. What item?
Item C.
C, okay.
Therefore, move to approve items A and B of the consent calendar?
Second.
A motion, a second on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item C is waived. The first reading and introduce the ordinance opposing a 2.341 rate increase requested by Recology San Bruno for 2012, 2013, to be effective July 26, 2012, as presented in the notice of proposed increase mailed to all property owners. Michael?
Thank you, Jim. This ordinance appeared before the council earlier and we voted on it, and I believe we voted unanimously to pass it, along with two other ordinances that I was told at the time did pass. Now they're being reintroduced. But rather than just have this go into the consent calendar, I wanted to make sure that we understand and inform the public in terms of what was changed in this version of the ordinance versus the original. And so, if we could get some clarification, please.
The change in the garbage ordinance is the removal, an incorrect removal, reference to the Health and Safety Code that required a two-thirds vote of the council to approve the ordinance.
Okay. All right, thank you. And if I could ask our acting city attorney if we could get some clarification on the reason why that language was changed?
Well, as I understand, is this on? As I understand the issue, there was a recital in the initial ordinance that referred to a Health and Safety Code section that referred to a voting requirement that's not accurate. So, the reason we're having you reintroduce the ordinance is to make sure that the ordinance has the correct language in it and does not refer to an incorrect reference to a Health and Safety Code section. The material terms of the ordinance are the same.
Okay. And I hate to put you on the spot because I know you're walking into this and probably don't have a lot of the history, but in your experience as city attorney in other cities, has it been your experience that the reference to the Health and Safety Code is fairly common in these ordinances as they pertain to city fees?
I would say it's just, this is, the standard is wrong for general law city. The two-thirds is not required. I don't, I can't speak to why it was in the original resolution or recitals of the ordinance, but...
Let me just elaborate a little bit further. The specific Health and Safety Code reference is for a two-thirds voting requirement in the event that the collection of the fee or charge that is the subject of the ordinance, whether that collection is via the property tax rolls. That is not the case here, has never been the case here, and frankly, staff is a little bit unclear. We do not know how or why that language appeared in the ordinance. It appears to us that it has just been carried incorrectly for a number of years in the same ordinance that we routinely present each year for consideration of the rates. The city attorney, who is on vacation tonight, originally opined that the error could be viewed as a minor clerical correction that would not have required reintroducing the ordinance for first reading or subsequent second reading. In an abundance of caution and in order to provide clear and complete, clear and complete opportunity for the public to understand what the action is, we've reintroduced it via the consent calendar.
Okay. Now, I'm certainly not an attorney and I did read the text of the state constitution that was changed by Proposition 218 where it refers to this, and also the text of the Health and Safety Code that addresses the same topic. And in my interpretation of it, I didn't see that that particular piece of the Health and Safety Code addressed only a situation where it would be put on the county tax roll. There was some mention to it, but I don't see it specifically addressed in the section that addresses the fees. And it almost seems like the two pieces of legislation, they overlap with one being more stringent than the other.
Well, I understand that it's a very complicated area of statutory and constitutional authority. I've done, in the other city I represent, we just did our garbage rates a few weeks ago, and we did it by ordinance. And it did, we did not require a two-thirds vote. I think that's the rule. We did not, just like San Bruno here, we do not put it on the property tax roll. It's a rate-setting procedure whereby it gives the, the city council sets the rates for the service that's provided through your franchise with Recology, and then that is the authority for Recology to put that on a regular bill that goes to the residents.
Okay.
So, the, I can't speak to why it's two-thirds to put it on the property tax roll. It's probably a technical or policy reason that that's because it's something that is more formal, if you will, because it's, requires a action involving the county tax collector. That may be the reason. I'm speculating a little, but the main point here is that, and I've talked with Mr. Zaffarano about this particular issue, that the solution to the issue of the reference was to reintroduce the ordinance. We're confident that the issue, that the process is appropriate. It does not require a two-thirds vote.
Okay. And my final question. If for some reason somebody challenged the city on this particular thing because the language was changed to a less stringent version of the language, worst-case scenario, we would just have to repeal the fee increase? Or are there, could there be other consequences to the city?
Well, that would involve someone taking the city up on a writ that would require a proper procedure. We believe that we are employing the proper... Thank you. That would entail, I'll repeat myself for the benefit of the audience and the recording. That would entail a writ proceeding in Superior Court where someone would say that, in essence, that the council did not follow the right procedure. That would be their allegation. And the remedy in court would be do it the right way if that, what happened to be the wrong way, but the process you're employing is the correct way.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will introduce...
Just introduce seven, see.
So, all right, so I'll move to approve item C on the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion, second to approve the consent calendar, item C, on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted and mailed. We don't have a public hearing this evening. Item nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Name and street, please.
Perry Peterson, Senate Court. Mr. Mayor, City Council. Last time I spoke to you, as I recall, I said the agenda was not posted in the appropriate time before the meeting, and I'm reporting the same thing happened again for this meeting. But the reason I came was because the notice of proposed increases to water and wastewater rates, in it, it says that the water rates go up nine, 9.8 percent, and the sewer rates 10-point-something. I made some calculations. And while it may be that your staff or consultants calculated that 9.8 percent, but when I run a calculation for the water rate differences from the existing rates for people billed at 15, 20, 25, and 30 units, which covers quite a span of water usage, I find that the percent difference is an increase of from 20 to 50 percent. And in three of the cases, it's more like 50 or 50 percent or more. I think this is a material difference from the way the rates increase is advertised to what it actually is. And in order to do this calculation, all you have to do is calculate how much you would pay for water at 15, 20, 25, and 30 units according to current rates and according to the proposed rates. It's not a complicated calculation. I suggest you might want to try it. I think if you wanted to actually have the rates go up 9.8 percent, what you would do is calculate the rates the way they are now and then add on 9.8 percent. So, I think there's a problem with the way the proposed increases were advertised, but there's another effect that this is going to have. When the rates, when a homeowner actually gets a bill for a 20, with a 20 percent to 50 percent increase on it, they're going to do exactly what I'm going to do. I'm going to cut my water use. I'm not going to pay anymore. And what that'll do is, if there's enough people like me who would rather not spend more money, the city will end up having to raise the rates again, or they're not going to have any money to spend on capital improvement projects. I try to, I try to, I don't like people who present me with annoying problems and they have no solution. So, the solution I would recommend to you is just add 9.8 percent to each bill, and probably no one will change their usage. So, it's a pretty easy solution. And for the record, I'm still in favor of a rate increase. At the same time, I'm in favor of full, timely, and accurate public disclosure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Bearlere of San Anselmo. I'm going to assume that shopping for food at the firehouse is not in their contract and that shopping for food for the firehouse can be done fully and online. That shopping for the firehouse can be done online. It's not necessary to take a truck and three men to Safeway or Lennard's or Lucky's to go shopping. When a truck and three firemen leave the firehouse to shop, that station is short in personnel and equipment. When the firemen take this unnecessary, unspoken, and unwritten perk, they leave the citizens of San Bruno vulnerable, and it's going to come back to bite us. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. I'm kind of afraid of the microphone.
It's all right. Just state your name and your street.
Okay. My name is Sarah Glasscock and I live at 285 North San Anselmo. And I've lived in or around this neighborhood on and off for the past 15 years. Before today, I had never attended a city council meeting. I'm here to raise what about, I'm here to raise an issue about what I feel is a pretty blatant inequity in how the city handles parking enforcement through fines, the towing of cars, and the fact that these rules only apply to my neighborhood and all others which are located east of Santa, of El Camino. Every other week on rotating days, just about every other, every street in San Anselmo has street sweeping. In my neighborhood, near the heart of San Bruno, if I don't move my car before the time posted, Parking Patrol comes by and leaves me a $38 ticket. The officer that patrols our street is generally pretty understanding and has let us slide on a couple of occasions where I've had either a flat tire or we were waiting for a car part we ordered to arrive. As renters, we do not have access to off-the-street parking. When our truck breaks down, we have nowhere to park but on the street so my husband can repair it. We don't have a lot of money laying around to pay these parking tickets or to take our car to the car dealership. My husband does our car repair. I know I speak for every neighbor and city resident I've discussed this with, when I asked the question, why are the neighborhoods east of El Camino subject to fines for parking when the rest of San Bruno isn't? Why are we the only ones playing what I like to call musical cars twice a month? Why is it okay for someone who lives on Oak or Bennington Drive to park their car, truck, boat, or trailer on the street for any number of days, weeks, or even years? Actually, no of this is happening. I purchased my car from someone that lives in the Crestmore neighborhood, and before I bought it, it sat parked on the street in front of his house for over four years. Never once in four years was it ticketed or was there a violation, or was there a notice that was in violation of the ordinance that states your car needs to be moved every 72 hours or is subject to being towed? If I leave my truck in front of my house for three weeks, I get a notice to move. If I don't move, regardless of the reason, it's towed. Then I have even less money, right? After talking to a number of friends and neighbors about this issue, I decided to post an announcement to the San Bruno Patch website. The number, if the number of responses I have received in just a few hours is any indication, I think it's time to revisit this issue. And I'm not the only person that posted something about this. Go to sanbrunopatch.com and punch in "street sweeping," and there's a couple of pages worth of material if you guys ever feel like reviewing it. I received an equal number of responses from people that live on both sides of El Camino, which I totally did not expect. "Not only are those of us on the east side tired of being the only source of parking ticket fine revenue, but those people that reside on the west side neighborhoods are tired of their neighbors' cars, trailers, and boats taking up permanent residence on the street." And that's a direct quote. It's my understanding that the rationale behind this ticketing practice has to do with the width of the street and the amount of parked cars in regards to the ability of the street sweeper to effectively clean the street. "The streets within a six-block radius of San Bruno Park are just as narrow and congested as the street where I live," which again is North San Anselmo. An example would be is that if two cars are driving head-on, it's difficult for either car to pull over to allow the other to pass, whether that's in my neighborhood, whether that's in the avenues, or whether that's on, say, Acacia, Acacia Avenue. In addition, I drop my daughter off at Parkside School every morning. At 8:00 in the morning, the streets surrounding the school are just as congested as the streets surrounding my house after everyone leaves work. I don't notice any difference between my neighborhood, in the heart of San Bruno, and the areas surrounding San Bruno Park and Parkside Middle School. It's all just as crowded. So, that, to me, is not a valid argument. The more cars, there were more cars throughout San Bruno, oh, wait, I'm sorry. There are more cars throughout all of San Bruno than there were in 1990, which is about when I estimate that this bogus ordinance went into effect. While in the process of writing this, I was able to immediately find statistical data that supports this claim. I feel this ordinance should never have been passed in the first place, and now reasons for having passed it are not even valid, are no longer even valid. My proposed solution would be to patrol and ticket each street equally. If there is an issue with not having enough resources to hire the additional staff to patrol all of the streets in San Bruno, why not rotate the burden equally? For example, my street is currently ticketed on the first and third weeks of the month. Instead, ticket my street the first week of the month. On the third week of the month, find somewhere else to ticket, on the other side of El Camino. Either all of San Bruno is subject to fines or no one in San Bruno is subject to fines. I have absolutely no problem with the city collecting revenue through parking fines. I mean, that's fine. Every city needs revenue, especially now. But I have a problem with the fact that the east side neighborhoods are being singled out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You have quite a few issues there, so we heard them. We can't really do much about them this evening, but the chief has heard those, and I'd like to get a report at the next meeting about a little history on what's happening and how things really have evolved over the last number of years. So, you're absolutely right. Thank you.
To the chair. And when the report, Mr. Mayor, when the report comes back, can they be notified so that they're aware of when the meeting is occurring?
Yeah.
So, if they wish to view it or be here in person to offer comments?
Look at the next couple of agendas and we'll try to get some information on that. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I might just ask your agreement to schedule this for the first meeting in July.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we can do a better job between now and then rather than before the next meeting.
Yeah, I know that CPD's pretty busy around the Fourth of July, so...
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, and I think we want to look also at the, at the issue of the utility of, or the need for the, related to street sweeping. So, that will involve the work of several of our departments.
Yeah, no, I understand it's more than just ticketing and revenue.
Right.
That's sort of a secondary, you know, a lot of that was started many years ago because we had a lot of flooding in the east side, and a lot of that is to, in fact, keep those storm drains clean. So, that's part of it, but that's not the whole story. So, we'll get it for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks. Come back often. You weren't that bad with the microphone, you know.
[laughter]
You did just fine. Thank you. Item number 10, conduct of business. We have three items, A, B, and C. The first one is to adopt a resolution increasing the capital improvement project appropriation for the sanitary sewer condition assessment project by $440,000 for a total appropriation of $1,435,000. We're going to adopt these separately, but I'll read them all now. The second is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the contract with Viola, formerly JF Pacific Liners, increasing the contract amount by $319,000 for a total contract amount of $1,239,000 for sanitary sewer condition assessment project and approving a total construction contingency in the amount of $63,000. And number three is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a contract with Holmes International in an amount not to exceed $97,000 for sanitary sewer condition assessment project support and oversight. Staff, please.
Honorable mayor, councilmember, good evening. In our presentation, I will go over the purpose of the project in the beginning. Then, I will let Dennis Bosch, the service manager for sewer, to take you through the process, how this will, is working in the real life. And then, I will come back to take you through the history of this project and our recommendation. As you are very well aware of, the city provides sanitary collection services for the residents of our city. And as any sewer system operator, the city has to manage our system effectively in a certain given regulatory environment. The Water Board, back in 2006, passed a, issued a order setting clear expectation how those sewer system operators has to manage their system and to meet certain regulatory requirements. In addition to the environment, regulatory environment, also is critical for our rate payers to manage our system for a lower possible overall cost. Reason why it's important for us to proactively, as much as possible, assess the problems in the system and to try to address them with, in proactive manner, to minimize the cost. If you are reacting to any, and you are fixing the problem, overall will cost the rate payer more versus if you proactively address those issues. The most commonly known assessment tool, how you are assessing the condition of the system, is the video, is video inspecting, videoing the system. You are using then this information to prioritize the work, what you need to do on the system. You are prioritizing the work for spot repair or line replacement or different type of maintenance activity as is needed. I will let Dennis to take you through a few video inspection to show you how that information can be used.
Good evening, mayor and council.
So, again, as Clara said, that basically this is video inspection of sewer lines or sewer mains and some laterals where a robotic camera is put into the line and it travels from one manhole to another, inspecting any and all problems. Sometimes the lines are good, sometimes they're not. As you can see on the left, this is an area where pipe is missing. You can see basically the pipe close to you, it's cylindrical, and then there's a void, and then you can see the cracked pipe on the other side of the void. Basically, what's happened here is that the clay pipe has failed and dirt above the, above the area of failure then sinks down. And usually, a lot of the times, the mains are in the street, so you have vibration from cars pushing down the dirt, and then eventually a sinkhole forms. In this case, this, this pipe failure caused almost a two-foot void up on top of the asphalt that we were lucky enough, a car didn't, a car didn't drive along and have a wheel fall into it. You can also see on the picture on the left that there's... You can also see on the picture on the left that there's debris, pipe pieces, rocks, dirt, and if we hadn't have caught this, I mean, in this case, we were able to see a sinkhole, but when those things accumulate, it stops the sewage from flowing freely, and it, it eventually causes a back, a backup or a sanitary sewer overflow. On the right is an area where you have a pretty good cylindrical pipe, but then there's a, there's a crack or a missing piece of pipe that roots have found an entry into the line, and the root then grows, and it can grow to the point where it actually blocks total, total flow. And it also can trap solids as it goes by. So, it, it again makes a, a blockage. So, in these two cases, the one on the left, that's obviously a repair that we need to do. The one on the right, we might not have to cause or use money to dig that, but we could, we could hit that with maintenance tools to remove the roots. And then, once the, the roots are removed, then we can put the camera back in and then The picture on the left is, is, it's, it's hard to see, but this is basically grease that has compounded on itself to almost take up almost half of the pipe. So again, this, this can tell us that there might be a problem farther down the line. We obviously need to remove the grease so that we restore the, the flow area within the pipe. So, once we would, we would remove that, we could use that information to assess whether or not is, the next time we go to clean it, is this happening more often than not? Is it once every couple of years? Is this a repair that's needed? Can we hit this up with a maintenance, a maintenance schedule?
Dennis, are the, these all the same diameter pipes? Are they different?
The one on the left here is a lateral. If we go back, I believe those were mains. The one on the left, the one on the left was a main, and the one on the right was a main.
Which is diameter-wise?
Six inch.
Six inch.
Six inch. Basically, though, even though it's, one's a main, one's a lateral, a lot of the properties still stay the same of, of the characteristical problem. Explain the picture on the left. On the right, there's actually two problems here. You can see that the, that the pipe connection to the top-left corner, it's cracked and it's become offset. So, it's as if you were to take a, a straight pipe, cut it in the middle, and then move one down and move one up. There's also silt, silt in the pipe, which means that sometimes when you have offsets, dirt, rocks, debris, comes down through those cracks and then settles out. So, on this case, we would go ahead and we remove the silt first to try to see if there was any other problems. And then, we obviously know that there's a crack there, and I would have to look farther back to see, okay, is this just one spot repair? Or are there six on this, this one, what we refer to as a line segment, a sewer main between two manholes? And how far, and how much money, and how much energy are we going to devote? And what's the best bang for the buck in the sense of fixing one spot or fixing a larger area so that we don't have to come back and, and, and work towards our goal of, of reducing sanitary sewer overflows?
I will take you through the history of the project itself. Back in 2007, based on the need and also on the set requirement, the city went out for a bid and entered in a contract with, with the contractor to video inspect the known 63-mile sewer, sewer system at that time. Was only just one contractor proposed to our bid document, and the city entered in a contract, five-year contract with the contractor, Pacific Pipeline, to video inspect the whole system estimated at time for 63 miles. The unit price was $275 per linear feet of video inspection. Our information system for our sewer system improved, was improved in the last few years, and our GIS system was updated, and our level of information about our sewer system is much higher today versus back in 2007. Reason why became obvious at the end of this inspection process that 22 additional mile of sewer system exist, and that those additional 22-mile of system needs to be inspected also. And that is the purpose of, and the recommendation for tonight, to, to extend the contract for the video inspection of this additional 22-mile of sewer, sewer system with the same unit price how was, how the city entered in contract with Pacific Pipeline back in 2007 for the same 200, 2.75 per linear feet. Also, based on the degree still of a certain, of uncertainty about the information on our sewer system, is our recommendation to include a 20% contingency to the contract if something will come up during, during the implementation of this contract, that additional segments need to be inspected to have enough flexibility in the contract to inspect the whole system. Already received some question, and maybe, maybe our report was a little bit misleading about the need for our third action request to enter in a consultant contract in project management support with Holmes International. The reason for our request to enter in a consultant contract with Holmes International, one of the known wastewater experts in the field is for them to provide us with quality control and expertise support for the following task. They will review all of the video inspection for the most severe classified defects in our system in order for us to be able to prioritize those repair or actions based on our time limitations set by the baykeepers. In our agreement with the baykeepers, certain time limit was set for those severe defects in how long time those need to be addressed. This consultant will, will reassess those video, video inspected sections to verify if those were classified properly, and what is the proper repair for that defect will be. Also, to take the remaining of the video inspections and just verify from a quality point of view, a certain number of selected videos, just to make sure that the city is receiving the quality product, what is the expectation for us to receive. The other task what they will help us with to make sure that at the end of this project, the city will have a searchable database to be able to easily prioritize the work needed to be done as a follow-up from the result of this condition assessment. Also, as a additional, they will also help us to schedule the work just to make sure that no segment of our system will be left on, will be left uninspected. These three additional fund requests will, will be a total of $404,000 increase to our existing appropriation. The prior appropriation for this project was a $900,000 initially when the contract was approved in 2007. This would be the additional construction cost for $319,000 for the additional 22 miles. The 20% proposed contingency would be $63,000. Initially, when the construction contract was approved in 2007, also was included in our CIP for 2007 and '09, and still approved in, in our last CIP in 2009 and '10, a $75,000 appropriation for project support and oversight. From that appropriated $75,000, still $39,000 available. With that additional fund request of $58,000, then will provide us with a $97,000 consultant contract for project oversight and support with Holmes International. And this will bring the total project cost to a 1.435,000 total project cost. Our recommendation is for you to approve the additional appropriation of $404,000 to our CIP project. Also, to authorize the city manager to amend the construction contract with the proposed $319,000. Also, for you to approve the contingency project for, contingency budget of $63,000, and to authorize the city manager to enter in a contract with Holmes International for a not-to-exceed amount of $97,000 for critical project support and quality oversight for this project. This concludes our presentation, and if you have any question of us.
Well, I just have one question or comment. I know it's a relatively small amount as far as footage or mileage goes, but I want to make sure that we're not having to video anything in the Crestmore-Glenview area.
All of the video inspection in Crestmore area was done about a year ago, and the purpose at that time was, that was part of the ongoing inspection of the system, but the information also was used to support the recommendation, what the stamp came back to you for recommendation to replace the system. But that Crestmore neighborhood was inspected about a year ago as part of this ongoing go-around inspection of the whole system citywide.
Any questions of staff?
Just on your question, Mr. Mayor, you said about a year ago it was done.
Yes. About a year ago. I can further define, I can look at exactly the date.
I think the city manager knows why. Somewhere in the question and the answer.
If I could just interject, you may remember that in that time period, we were still actively in the process of evaluating the status of the infrastructure and the amount of damage that might have occurred as a result of the explosion and resulting fire. So, it was done as part of the ongoing inspection program, but it also predated the decision-making and informed the decision-making about replacement of the entire Crestmore infrastructure, which had not yet been a year ago or thereabouts. That decision-making and information gathering was still actively in process.
Michael?
First of all, I just want to say I have a question with you. Sorry. I wanted to say, I think it's, it's great that the city's taking such a proactive stance in collecting the information. I know that there's already a wealth of information that's been collected that's now in a database, and this video system's going to add on to it. I hope my colleagues will indulge me here, but I, I am intrigued by what's, what's going on. So, I do have some questions in, in terms of how this works. And I think you partially answered one of my questions in terms of the contingency, and you said that would be for additional segments, should they be discovered. And so, I was a little bit curious about how the initial estimate was developed, the additional that was discovered, how that was discovered that, that it existed, and why we would suspect that there, that there's additional segments that we may not know
This is tied directly to the evolution of our information about our sewer system. The Sewer Division, alike other, other division in the city, in the last few years, really were focusing on improving very aggressively our GIS system, GIS information of our system. Back in 2001, as part of, as part of our first master plan, a digital map of the system itself was produced, but based on everybody's experience, that the degree of reliability of that information wasn't very high. Reason why was a very concerted effort to improve and to develop our GIS information and was a certainly based on great work done by the Sewer Division, and this is true for water and stormwater also. They were able to improve reliable information and the whole GIS information for our sewer system now is probably reliable to 95%. That would be my closest estimate how reliable our GIS system is now for sewer. Back in 2007, that was not available. And the reason why not knowing, just estimating now is a matter of knowing what is the length of our system.
Okay. And is that the only, the only construction risk? I think in the staff report, the word "construction risk" was used, so I was wondering if there are actual construction-type activities, or are these cameras basically lowered down and through a manhole and then allowed to run through the system?
That would be the only risk what I am aware at this time. If they have any problem that they cannot get the camera out, or they are stuck or something, then typically our Sewer Division will respond and to help them to address the problem. But the reason why I think that there's still a degree of uncertainty, this is the first project when the city is doing our overall assessment of the system, and is just, maybe there will be other issues which are unknown to us right now. If will be not necessary, then of course, the contingency is not spent.
Okay. Yeah, I just did a quick calculation at the, at the... Yeah, just did a quick calculation and at the, at the present rate, it comes out to about fourteen thousand dollars per mile, so our contingency would probably buy us about four and a half miles maybe. So we're comfortable that, that we've, we've got it nailed down to that level of accuracy?
And will be our intent not to use one dollar of that contingency if will not be necessary.
Okay. And, and you did just mention that this is the first go-around with this and so I was wondering about the, the five-year cycle. So the proposal is to every five years, re-inspect all one hundred percent of every, of every sewer?
It is a set cycle, how, how you have to come back and to re-inspect the whole system. Also is there are many other requirements that after any repair, you have to re-inspect that segment whenever you are doing a repair or after ASO, you have to come back and to re-inspect the system. How, how that will be managed from now on after finishing this inspection of the system will depend on many, many things. First, you have to assess, okay, what is, what is the degree of the problem in the system? And then is included right now in our CIP budget for future years purchase, a purchase of the video inspection equipment. Many cities, most of the cities went in that direction to really establish that skillset in their agency and to be able to rely that, on that, on ongoing basis. How the city will manage this on long-term was, was not discussed or decided until more information is not available for us, but really are the most critical issues and problem which will, will need to be addressed based on the result of this overall assessment of the system.
So there's a possibility maybe somewhere down the line, we could contract with another city and have them do that more?
Yes, it is very possible now in interim basis. It's our intent to do as the next step. After this, this video inspection of the whole system will be done. It's our intent to go out for a on-call kind of contract, who can help us after any ASO or any repair, just to come in and to inspect. In the same time, right now is the city in discussion and with City of South City of how they could help. They have equipment and they are just training their employee, they are just improving their own skillset. That's why they are not at the level when they can make any commitment yet. But yes, that one other avenue what the city will research of that is a viable alternative. In the same time with other alternative, what would be the better, long-term solution for the city to establish that skillset internally or to be provided by somebody else?
Okay. But getting back to the, the whole system then, do we repeat the, the overall inspection on a periodic basis or only when changes are made to the system?
Will, will need to be repeated on ongoing basis.
Okay. And then as we schedule that, will that be based on, do we basically go back to the first segment that we did in the first go-around and then just go by the oldest video or do we get strategic and target areas where we found problems and then areas that we know for a fact are going to be good or they're newer, then we would just eliminate those from inspection?
In long-term, you will have to, you have to do both. You have to do the strategic targeted review based on the problem area. Also, you will have to go back on ongoing basis in, after a longer timeframe, but to make sure that you are catching all of those preventive needs, what you would not catch any other way.
And it seems like the real value in this system is real-time. Basically, you run the thing, you find a problem and you fix it, but historically it becomes less and less valuable because between, between two rainy seasons, you could, you could have a clean pipe and by the next year, it's, it's a problem.
Correct. Will be more challenging now in the beginning when based on this so much new information, the city is just starting this many new programs like the spot repair. You just approved a very, very aggressive spot repair program exactly for this reason, that when this inspection will show that you have fifty location, which must be that are structurally deficient or they have an offset and they pose a imminent risk for ASO. Then based on our agreement with the baykeeper and industry standards, you have to fix that problem in ninety days. And it's a difference timeframe set in one year if those are not imminent failure, either you have to fix in two years or to come back with another inspection after a year to confirm that still is a stable defect and nothing can happen. Well, to address all of those needs now discovered and was the result of that overall inspection, will take a very concerted effort for the next two years until somehow the city will catch up with many of this work which will need to be done now. In longer term, that basically those pics will basically just will be leveled out and will be more pre-planned, pre-programmed kind of activity. Even then will be certain percentage of reactive emergency things, but hopefully that will be much less as percentage versus now until after the city will catch up. I will just say, just to show you that this really is working, that I just want to take the opportunity to say that last year, after many years of fifty and forty ASO is in a year, last year were only just eighteen and up until today, this year, only just nine SSOs were experienced by the city. And this year were two months without any ASO, which was the first in our history that I just want to compliment the hard work that the sewer division really is doing.
Do you know of the, the SSOs that were, or, or problem areas that were identified, how many of those were identified because of the video versus other things like a giant sinkhole was on top of them?
Maybe you can answer this question.
Three.
That's what's a pretty precise answer. I cannot top that.
Okay. Okay, I also had a question regarding the, the contract for oversight of the system. Initially in the first contract, seventy-five thousand dollars was allocated. We only used thirty-six thousand, so I was wondering how that particular contractor is, is billing? Is it based on trouble spot that was identified and they were called in to, to comment on?
For the prior phase, wasn't any contract entered in for project management and support. Two different sewer experts supported us for different task and the department asked them during that time to perform very specific task to support us during, up to this point.
Okay. Because I was looking at what that broke down per mile of, of sewer that was inspected and it's dramatically different now with this new allocation of ninety-seven thousand. It, for, for the remaining twenty-something miles, it's, it seems like a lot more expensive for the amount of work that's being done.
Yes, but you are absolutely right in the sense that this work and support is not really just for the twenty-two miles, is for the whole system. Now is the key to make sure that is, that searchable database is available to us in a user-friendly way for the whole system, not just for the twenty-two miles, but the whole system. And also the consultant, right now, will review that fifty locations for the most severe classifying defects for the whole system, not just for the twenty-two mile. That this really is little bit a misrepresentation of the effort needed. It's very critical to have this data available to us in a usable manner. This is a huge quantity of data and you want the data to be useful for our planning and of CIP and maintenance activity. And the consultant helping us to make sure that is easily searchable. The department doesn't have that, that work is highly technical, also is very highly technical work to review and to assess based on the industry standard. If the contractor classifying that defect in a right way, they are certain industry standard, they are fine difference category and how they are, what category they are including is very critical and important, what kind of follow-up action will require and important for us to have that kind of technical expertise. This expertise will not, will need to be nurtured and improved in the city. But this is a new activity for us and is important for us to have that kind of expertise support available.
Okay. And so then the previous work that was done for the thirty-six thousand was not related to quality control of the video, it was something else?
Was also to a certain degree, but was, was based on more task-oriented, that they would ask to help us to, to assess, but how much percentage of the system already was inspected. Certain selected quality control also included some quality control if the database meet the set expectation of the city or not. And also they reviewed some of the video themselves and made a recommendation based on that review also.
Okay. Right, thank you. And Mayor Wayne asked previously about the diameter of the pipes that we were looking in, in the video and you mentioned that there were laterals and mains. So the eighty-five miles that we're, that we're quoting currently, that is all mains and laterals or lower laterals, I guess they would be? Is that what's included?
It's just mains.
Just mains?
Yeah, mains.
Okay.
Yeah, we, there's no existing data on or historical files on which houses were given the correct specified clean-out that gives, that we take the jurisdictional responsibility for as, for maintenance or for clearing a blockage or considering that. You can't get a main camera down a lateral, you have to use a smaller lateral camera, which-
Say that you have one.
Which we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is there any plan for creating a catalog of those videos?
There are nineteen hundred, there's nineteen hundred sewer line segments and since we don't know the exact number, we believe it to be, last time we thought, possibly around thirty percent. But the, if we were to take that on, that would bring a, a new discussion on, on, on resources to, to, to have a preventative maintenance plan. Since we don't know where they all are at, it would be tough to do that. We, the, the ones that are problems, we know and I have a preventative maintenance program for us to remove the roots and do some of the things we do in mains on the smaller four-inch laterals. So there is a, there is a preventative proactive solution for that. But if everyone in the city were to install laterals, let's just say, over a five-year period, that would have a significant effect.
And it, it is our plan to video inspect our, the laterals for which the city is responsible for. And, and also just to remind you that you authorize the development of a private ladder policy. And that is, is the consultant provided us with the first, with a first draft and will be our intent to bring back to you some recommendation in the next many months.
Okay. And it sounds like there probably wouldn't be a whole lot of value in, in having that information because most of, most or the majority of the, those laterals are the responsibility of the homeowners. And I'm assuming that our, our agreement with the baykeeper doesn't hold us responsible for any SSOs that occur because of the laterals?
They are not holding us responsive, responsible for any, any ASO which are taking place on private lateral. But the city is responsible for ASO on lateral, lower lateral who the city took responsibility of, which is about thirty percent of the lateral, how Dennis Bosch said.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for indulging me.
Anyone else? Here you go.
Chair, going back to the twenty-two miles, just so I understand too, is due to the system or not having the high-tech stuff in place, it was an assumption of around sixty-three miles. We're twenty-two miles short. If, when I was reading before, if I'm not mistaken, in the state complaint or in the quality board, there was an allusion, they alluded to about seventy-seven miles that we had in the town, in the city. So I'm trying to wonder how they came up with about seventy-seven, but we were at, at two different numbers. Now granted, I understand that doesn't mean it has to be exact, but there's a wide enough difference that how, how did they figure it out in oh eleven and we're now coming back and obviously are short twenty-two based on data that we have that we've implemented and now? And when did we come up with, we're missing twenty-two miles?
Our process with the regional board and I will go back and, but I'm pretty sure that's, that's what you remember, that's the mileage what was included in our agreement.
Don't go off my memory though.
That was based on all information provided to them and that really meant, but that process took place in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. And that was the level of knowledge of our system at that time and that information was provided to them. Last year was really finalized our GIS information system and that is the most reliable information what the city has.
Is there a deadline for this taping to be concluded? The videoing?
Yes, it is, it is included, well, was included in, is included in our agreement with the baykeepers, that based on our initial contract, all of the video inspection has to be finished by end of June.
Of this year?
Of this year.
So this month, all the videoing has to be done and we're short twenty-two miles, is what we're saying?
That was included in our agreement and knowing that it's more mileage than how initially was intended to, the city informed them and asked them to consider that is more mileage to perform video inspection on than initially assumed. And they agreed with a time extension of end of July and it's our intent to finish this inspection of the whole system by end of July.
When did we find, when did we realize that there was twenty-two miles that we needed to deal with?
A few months ago.
What's a few mean? Just help me that, because to me, a few means two.
End of February.
February.
I appreciate those succinct answers. Thanks. Okay, so we have till the end of June, so how are we? Oh, July now, because we've asked for an extension. So have they been, have the video folks been proceeding? Have they been going? Because I'm thinking now in my- Because I'm thinking now in my mind, I'm going, that's what that was. But this was on a weekend, I think. So are they working, or is it just weekdays? Is it weekdays? Is there one crew? Is there, how many, how are we doing this? Because obviously there's a short period of time now.
Correct. In the last month or so, they had three crews working on ongoing basis, only just during the big days. The city did not authorize any work for them during weekends. They, they are going with about three miles a week. And based on overestimate and underestimate, they will be able to finish the work by the end of July.
So we've, we barked upon this a couple of years ago, but now we're having three crews coming out. So what a layperson would say is somehow we got behind. Because now we're having three crews come out, I don't know if that's normal, standard practice, that three crews are devoted to taping, but I think obviously we're on a deadline. So we're having to step it up in order, and use their resources in order to meet that deadline.
The resources, the unit price is paid, the same unit price is paid to them today, than how much was paid for linear fit of video inspection four years ago. Doesn't cost us any more money, the city pays them the same unit cost.
Okay. And, and you, in your report, you about the, I'll call consultant, they manage, they review, they determine the most severe, they verify the quality control, they schedule, or, and they're inserting the database, which I believe is a CMMS, they're going to help schedule the work. So they're really doing most, a lot of this from start to finish. And on the CMMS, my memory's going back to this is a system that has been in place now for a little bit, and then it got an upgrade in order to help even have it, have more options, even though the whole department wasn't up to speed, but in this division that they are. And now I thought we had a management analyst that was coming on board in order to help with the CMMS system, in addition to our staff. And now we're having a consultant also help in this because it's too technical?
Just to specify, this project is, will result in a searchable database, how the city can use this information. The CMMS is a management system which is open running in, in sewer division, in the last started in two thousand eight for certain task. Most aggressively, the CMMS was implemented for proactive maintenance planning activity beginning of this last January of this year. The management analyst, even if the department had this management analyst in our budget for a few years now, the position wasn't authorized, and the department had our management analyst on board beginning, one month ago? About one month ago. And yes, the consultant expertise is necessary to provide very highly technical support for this project. And it's our expectation that in time, the department will be able to develop through training, the skills necessary to provide higher level of support for those ongoing video inspection needs for the city.
Okay, so we got the CMMS, and I want to get off that, save it for another time. And it, and obviously there's already support that's required data-wise, you know, an ongoing annual, that we weren't, I wasn't fully aware of the cost, but I am now. And now the CMMS is still not, and we're having to have an outside consultant that's going to assist in this. I guess where I get a concern is that we bring on a program, as I've said before, we don't have it fully up in all the departments, we increase it. Now it's too technical, we need to bring in people to get us up to speed. I just get concerned with costs. That's the bottom line. On this consultant that you have here, is it, has this person or this agency assisted us in other support efforts in the department?
Yes. They are the consultant who is helping us developing the private lateral policy also for the city.
So they're also doing that, that as well? Okay. I, I guess I get concerned, and I also know we're, I kind of feel in a little bit of a box, in the sense that we have a deadline, and a sense it's got to get done. But in essence, it does cost more, and we need more assistance in order to get things in place. So I see it as almost a vicious circle of costs of consultants, which in effect go to the ratepayers. These, one of my concerns I have, and this is, were some of the questions, and, and I know it's very technical, and I know it's not easy. And as you alluded to earlier, the SSOs are dramatically decreased. Without all of a lot of the stuff, it's going the right way, probably why managing the crews, getting them to the hotspots, doing the proactive things that we should and need to be doing. And with the credit of the staff, they are making progress. And they have come significantly than where we sat a couple of years ago, in my opinion. And I think you, you alluded to that. So when we start having all these costs and all of these, I wonder if we're not, you know, to me, sometimes it's back to basics, getting the job done, making sure we have the means and to provide what the staff needs to get the job done. So sometimes I see we're getting all of this stuff, I understand some of it's required, but I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, I think we're getting into systems that we still continually need assistance, which causes us money and consultants. That's just my quick overview, based on the staff report and what I've heard tonight.
Mary?
There's not much left to ask. I just, I would like clarification. You said at one point that, if I'm correct or not, if the five, every five years we have to do the video, is that a state law? Is that what you said? Or we, I'm sorry, it got lost in all the?
The five years was included in our contract, that, that's how was the contract agreement with the contractor back in two thousand seven. Also, it is a state requirement when the inspection needs to be done, and is included in our agreement with the baykeeper, that the video inspection of the system should be done by June of this year.
Okay. And then, when that is over, do we have, is there a state requirement that we have to do it again within a certain time period?
I have to, yes, it is, but I am not certain exactly what that requirement is. I would prefer to follow up with clarification on the, on that aspect without to answer your, your question.
Okay, thank you. And then, my other question, kind of alluding to what the gentleman were asking about, the program, or all the data that we're going to receive, and the expertise that the other companies, the consultants are bringing to us, are we training anyone in staff to deal with that? Because as we go forward and we make repairs, it's going to change what the data is. So are we looking forward to doing that, or is it cheaper to have a consultant come by once a year, or what, what's the thought of all that?
Would be my assumption that a certain degree of high expertise, the city will need to be relying on, on ongoing basis, time to times, just to make sure that the city will be up to the latest requirement in the same time. Right now, the management analyst who is on board is acting as a project manager in essence for this project, and working directly with the consultant, and Dennis working directly with the consultant. And it's our intent to really create that expertise in-house also. Will be, our intent to provide also training to other classification in the city to have a better understanding, including at lead man level and other classification in sewer division about the industry standard, how they can use that information for preventive maintenance and to program and to plan the needed actions.
Okay. It's a lot, and there's a lot going on, but I think overall, we're going in the right direction. There's a lot that, we're playing catch-up, basically. My little speech from last time about eighty-five years, that we basically did very little as a city, and now we're having to catch up. So it's, I personally think we're going the right direction. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'd just like to say that the SSOs going down as much as they have is very gratifying. I just want to issue my frustration again regarding these cottage industries that are out there that are suing municipalities up and down the state of California, when many hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've had to pay to outfits like the baykeepers should, should be paying for these, and should be increasing this project. But unfortunately, it's not. So it's a frustrating situation, and I'm going to work very hard from a legislative standpoint to see what we can do about that. So having said that, we do have three resolutions to adopt here. Would anyone like to introduce, or are there any more questions? Michael?
To the chair. I, I was just going to comment, Councilmember O'Connell's question prompted me, I remembered something that I had read, and I believe that the state requires us to have an action plan, but it does not specify specifically what needs to be in that action plan. But looking at what I read in terms of industry practices, there, the only two methods that are available to us in terms of doing physical evaluation is either crawling down there and looking at it, or sending a camera in. And so, at least for this first go-around, it seems like video is, is the way to go. Going forward, I think we, we won't be forced to do this, but where we are forced to do it, I'm hoping that we do start developing some expertise. This is a great learning opportunity. I know that you guys are stretched pretty thin, but I think there's a lot of information to be gleaned by going through this process one time, and hopefully, as we go forward, bring more of this in-house. So with, with that comment, I will introduce the first resolution, increasing the capital improvement project appropriation.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Would you like to introduce one?
Authorizing the city manager to amend the contract with Lea, formerly JF Pacific Liners.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Here we go. I'm going to let the ladies go.
Okay. I'll introduce the third resolution, authorizing the city manager to approve a contract with Homes International in an amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item ten B is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the San Bruno Park School District to provide an after-school recreation program at Belair School.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This item is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the San Bruno Park School District to provide an after-school program at Belair School. The Recreation Division staff has established an excellent working relationship with the San Bruno Park School District, and we have been able to assist the district on many occasions by providing after-school programs or summer programs at their request to benefit the children in terms of educational supervision needs, et cetera. Two recent and very upcoming of these is, as long as I have an opportunity to talk about them. Next week, the city staff will be providing a robotics camp over at El Crystal School that the school has, has asked us to help put on. And we're very excited about that one. And starting in September, with the, with the addition of sixth grade at Parkside School, many of the parents came forward and asked us to put on some after-school programs at Parkside School. They will include supervision, different types of activities, allow kids still to participate in sports programs or other after-school programs, but essentially to provide a supervised healthy space. We have talked to the school, they are in favor of it, and they're providing program space for it. So there's a lot of, of times when the city has been able to, to work with the school district and to assist them in their programming. As you remember, may remember, during the two thousand ten-eleven school year, the city entered into a three-year agreement with Allen School to provide the After-School in Education and Safety Program, ACES. ACES program is a result of Proposition forty-nine from the two thousand and two ballot, a voter-approved initiative. And it expanded the Before and After School Learning and Safe Neighborhood Partnership Program. Essentially, what it does is it establishes a local after-school education and enrichment programs between the schools and community resources. And the city has been able to offer that. Now, we have just finished our second year, it has been extremely successful, we have rave reviews from the parents and the school administration, we have met our program goals, our budget goals. It is in place, and we are serving approximately eighty-seven students every day from the last bell until six P.M. And we've been doing that very successfully. The district has operated a very similar program, another ACES program, at Belair School for several years, and they have used a third-party private vendor to operate that program. According to the Belair administration, that vendor operated at least seven after-school sites throughout the state. They had a site in Santa Rosa, they had a site in San Bruno, and then at least five sites that they know of in Southern California. That company midway through this past school year had financial problems with their administration, and they were unable to fulfill their contract. And so they backed out of the contract with the school district, and the school district, because of our, of the city's success at Allen School, has come to us and asked us to take on the ACES program at Belair for next year and the two years thereafter. In addition to the Belair ACES program over the past few years, the city has operated a fee-based program. It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per month, again, from the end of the school, last school bell until six P.M. each school day. And many of the students are on scholarships, some, many of them do pay the, the hundred and twenty-five dollars per month. But that program's been in existence, and it serves approximately fifteen students on a daily basis, because the ACES program has not had capacity to handle all of the school, all of the needs of the neighborhood children in terms of after-school programming, supervision, enrichment activities, et cetera. So where we are coming to the city council tonight with a recommendation to enter into an agreement for, for the city to take on the ACES program, we would still offer the fee-based program under the same conditions, because the ACES program will not be able to accommodate all of the needs of the neighborhood. The terms of the agreement is that the district would be paying the city seven dollars and fifty cents per child per school day, up to a maximum of one hundred and six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Those funds will cover the costs of staff, equipment, and supplies, and will also provide the city with sixteen thousand dollars, or approximately sixteen thousand dollars of administrative costs for the program, essentially for the Recreation Division supervisor and managers' time and the office time it takes to administer this type of a program. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this program, but our recommendation is to enter into an agreement for the after-school program at Belair School.
Any questions for Randy?
To the chair. Just in the agreement, looking under section three, city's responsibilities, I do notice that it talks about the city and the personnel having the material and the equipment, putting together a program and various aspects.
together a program in various aspects. In the next page, under Section C, it talks about a collaborative program planning and development process with parents, youth, and school site representatives. But then under Section 4, District Responsibilities, Item B, it says, "District shall have the final program development approval." So it seems like we're facilitating it, we're having collaboration, but however, they're really, we, they're the final say then? Am I, am I reading that incorrectly? Or the final say is by the district on what program the city offers?
No, it's an excellent point, and you're, you're reading exactly right. Technically, the district has the con, the, the grant through the state of California for these funds, so they have to have the final approval. However, staff, city staff, will work with the parents to talk about what interests there might be, what special programs. In terms of providing after-school enrichment activities, there's a wide variety of activities that will go on, and we will be asking for the parent involvement. Are there special things that you'd like to see your children learning? And we work with our recreation contractors or contract, other contractors that might be in the, in the area to come in onto the campus and do these things. However, we do have to run out the curriculum we develop, pass the school district, and they have the final say of if it's approved or not.
Okay. And then on Section F, says, "The district shall be responsible for the security and safety of the children each day until they check in to the program." So is that for me to assume, then the city assumes a liability for the safety of the youth from the time they're in the program until the time they get home?
Until they're picked up.
Or picked up? And they are picked up on-site?
They're picked up on-site.
They are not allowed to walk home?
They are not allowed to walk home. If there's a special circumstance, we will work with the, with the parent directly and get the permission slips and those things, but we do not want that. We want the parents to pick them up on-site. But you are reading it correctly, that the district has the responsibility until they check in. And one thing that we do at Allen School, and we, we've already talked to the people at Belair, and we would continue the practice, we need an absentee list of all of the kids from the ACES program, all of the 84 children or so that are enrolled in our program. We need to know if they're, if they're there each day. Because within a few minutes of the program starting, we take roll, and if there's a child not there, let's check the absent list. If they were in school, but they're not at our program, we tell the district office, which is still open at that time, and it's their responsibility to find out what happened to that child. Once they check in with us, then it's our supervision. Our staff will handle the supervision of that child until they're picked up.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael?
I'm wondering, so, so the way it was structured before, the school district got the grant, they paid a contractor to come in and run the program. Now the school will get the grant, and they'll pass that through to the city, and the city will provide the program. Is that going to, and it's basically cost-neutral to the city? The grant will cover all costs. Will the city have to hire additional staff to, to staff this program?
We do hire some additional staff, as well as sometimes enter into a contract agreement like we do with all of our recreation instructors, and many of our recreation instructors work under a contract. So as I say, employees, I'm talking about both part-time employees as well as independent contractors. We will hire them. The contractors are coming in, maybe you have a specialty in speaking a different language or teaching art or robotics or something like that. You may come in and teach that for an hour every Thursday, or every day for three weeks in a row, and then you're gone, and another specialist will come in. The part-time staff will be there from the start of the school day until 6:00 PM. In terms of budget, that is all figured out into this agreement. And as I said, the $106,000 that the city receives will cover the cost of all staff, whether they're part-time or contractors, all equipment, all supplies, and give $16,000 back to cover the administrative costs that we've had so far. Now finishing the first complete year of the Allen program, we actually were able to generate more than the $16,000 to cover the administrative costs. We're going to take the remaining portion of that and put that back into supplies and equipment to save some of the costs next year for the ACES program as well.
Okay. And as a percentage, do you know off the top of your head what, how much goes to administration versus?
15%.
15%.
And that's part of the contract from the state.
Okay. And it, does the school district get any administrative overhead for handling the grant?
They do. That's taken off of the top. That does not impact these numbers here. I believe it is 5%, but I can go back and double-check. Essentially, it's the difference between the $112,500 and the $106,875. So approximately $6,000 off the top. I think it's about, I think that's 5%.
Makes sense. And is the 106, is that the same, same price they were paying the, the private contractor?
I have not seen that agreement, but I would assume so because under the grant agreement, the district is allowed a maximum of 5% overhead, and the rest would have to go to the services. And the, the vendor, in this case, the city or previously the outside vendor, the maximum there for administrative overhead is the 15%. So I would assume it's the same amount that was offered previously.
Okay. Thank you.
I would, if I can just point out, it, it's almost exactly the same agreement that we have with, at Allen School. There's a difference of $450 because the, the district made a mistake when they applied for the grant in Sacramento. So this, this agreement is $450 more, but the terms of this agreement are almost exactly the same as the one we have with Allen School.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Action.
I'll introduce the resolution for approval.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10C is authorize fireworks stand permits for 2012 upon finding that the nonprofit organizations meet the requirements of Resolution 2008-59 and ordinance number 1700.
Honorable mayor and council. Back in April, 17 groups took out applications to have a fireworks booth. Each of them returned their paperwork to my office in May. After my review, the police and the fire review, all of the applications also. Last Monday, I met with Councilmember O'Connell and Vice Mayor Ibera, and we went over the applications. And on Tuesday, a mandatory safety seminar was held where every application applicant was in attendance. I'm here this evening to ask for your approval of the fireworks applications and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for city clerk? Michael?
Through the chair. Thank you. I was just wondering, historically, have we ever had any, any one of these, the applicants, the grandfathered ones, run afoul of any of the rules that we've laid out for them?
Yes. Yes, we have. We have had, we've had embezzlement, and it's been by more than one group. It's been by two.
Okay. Well, that, that's sad, but I guess that's something that's beyond our control. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I suppose a motion.
Well, I just wanted to add, I think that, the way that it affects us is that there was a, I believe, late payment situation of the amounts due to the city. Is that, is that accurate?
Correct.
But that, that was corrected, and amounts due to the city were received.
Okay.
Okay. I'll move to approve.
Second?
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got it. Item number 11, reported commission boards and committees, there aren't none this evening. Item 12, comments from councilmembers? Anyone? Okay. Item 13, we will going, be going into closed session, and this is in a closed session for conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Property is parcel numbers 020013250 and 020013260. Agency negotiator is the city manager. Negotiating parties, the city of San Bruno and Martin Regis San Bruno Associates LP. And under negotiation price in terms of payment, there won't be any, city attorney?
Just, just a, just a point that it's technically a special meeting that we're going into for closed session, so it's not part of this meeting.
Okay. And there won't be any additional action to approve this evening. But before we do that, I'd like to adjourn the city council meeting to the next meeting on June 26, 2010, and now we will go into closed session. All right.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.